We're going to call the meeting back out of the closed session. And I will report that the board has, in the matter that we adjourned to, that the board has given direction to the general manager to proceed with hopeful settlement of this and negotiation with the interested party. Okay. I agree, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Marissa is going to be introducing our newest employee.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Ford. So this morning, we would like to thank Stephanie from Harvey Solid Waste Systems. Stephanie started with the district on October fifteenth, and she's really kind of just arrived in. She's assisting the solid waste department with customer requests. The three cart roll out, and then she'll be working on special SB thirteen eight three practice. Stephanie received her bachelor's degree in public health policy with a minor in Spanish from the University of California Irvine. And she's currently enrolled in UCIS Public Health Master's Degree Program with an emphasis on environmental health. We are very excited to have Stephanie on the board. I mean, it's been a while, but we're happy.
Stephanie, welcome aboard. Thanks for, thanks for joining us. And once as you've hinted at, Andy, you're always an Andy. Well, we look forward to having you with us and congratulations. No, I'm Ford.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to introduce John Gonzalez, our wastewater maintenance manager, who started on November fourth. John is coming out of retirement from the Orange County San Asian District. He was supervisor there. He's actually an employee there for nearly thirty years. He was a supervisor for twenty-one years. He has vast knowledge and experience in both home stations and collections, which makes him a very valuable asset to the organization. We're looking forward to, we're looking forward to John's experience to pass that on and mentor our supervisors and our employees so they can be successful in this career in the wastewater profession. And so I'm happy to introduce to John Gonzalez.
John, welcome aboard. Good morning, esteemed board. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you guys. I used to work for Mr. Oons.
We won't hold that against you. Confident that you can sign about that.
Like I tell everybody, I'm a work in progress. So what would you like to know? Anything about me?
Well, let me tell you a story. John talked my wife into learning collection system math, taught John staff how to, you know, better achieve their collection system certification. Congratulations.
Yeah, that was great. What a resource she is. Actually, I think she wrote a book and actually mentioned us in her book too, so, yeah.
I'm sure Bob had some influence on her mentioning.
Absolutely.
It was, it was, it was the second edition, not the first.
Yeah, so I worked at OCSD for twenty-nine years. I started out at the bottom. I was a summer helper and I probably, that was, it was just for the summer of eighty-nine. And then I came back for another helping of that because I was going to college. And then things happened where I needed a job, and so I applied for collections job there and I got the job and I was in collections the rest of my career there. And I was at, I was located at plant number two, which was at Perp and PCH my entire career also. They moved people around a lot over there, so being in one, at one plant for almost thirty years was kind of unheard of. But that's where collections was, so that's where I stayed.
One last thing, John probably doesn't know, but I started the intern program at Orange County San District.
Oh, well, thank you. It proved to be a good career for me. I was, I had a construction background. I was like a laborer in laborers union and all that. And then I went there. It's very interesting. If you guys ever want to hear about line cleaning with tires, because that's what OCSD's specialty, they use tires to clean lines and they'll clean lines all the way up to ninety-six inch with tires. They use a forty-eight inch tire. So I have a presentation that I used to give when I was involved in CBA. Anyways, I'm here. You guys have made the crew gather. Your wastewater guy are top-notch. You know, just getting out here. I was so enthralled with listening to your supervisor that's over the pumps. He, he has just tons of experience and I think I can learn a lot from him. So I'm really excited to be here and to help mentor those guys and get them to the next level.
We appreciate that. Welcome you aboard and look forward to twenty-nine more years with us.
Well, thank you very much. And it's a pleasure, like I said, and thanks Scott for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, let's move to item five, the Discovery Q.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Marissa, we do, doing this introduction.
One, one. So as we know, Sam presented two school education programs at the September twenty-third, part of the thirteen. The board is direct to discover the green or pathways program. So Discovery Q presented the program at the October eighteen city districts liaison committee meeting. Staff has also reached out to Newport East unified by school district staff. And we are just awaiting confirmation that the school district would like to utilize the program in their schools. There are also eleven private and charter schools in the district service area that could also benefit from the program. Today, as well, the director of partner relations with Discovery Q is here to present the green or pathways program. Thank you for learning what this morning was about. We will turn it over.
Thank you so much. A little bit of background view, as I mentioned, I am the director of partner relations at Discovery Q. I've been there for a year and a half. But more background of what I've done in my previous career prior to Discovery Q. I started in the solid waste industry many, many years ago at Waste Management, which is a private corporate company. And then I had the great privilege to come and work at the County of Orange eighteen years ago. And actually, I've been longer than that. But I oversaw all of their franchise agreements with the county of the cooperative and had their environmental education programs for the County of Orange OC Waste Recycling. It was unbelievably a great, amazing position to have because I got to work with seven jurisdictions throughout the counties. My goal was really to implement regional campaigns to help increase diversion from material being buried at the landfill. And so went from bottles and cans down to organic. So I love that I know the understanding of SB thirteen eighty-three and I found the impact of community and education element in the key theme. So when I started at OCWR, we've only talked about eighty-nine percent and I'm fifty percent, but now we're talking about seventy percent. But you can't get there until you anticipate they do. And that's been the key theme for us. So when I retired from the County of Orange, two years ago, finally retired, I played off, I got to enjoy. And then I found out from Discovery Q that they were looking for someone that understood their organization, underpants, compliance and education. And soon enough, a year and a half ago, I took, came on board to help them and help increase awareness about SB thirteen eighty-three. So I used to manage their contract many years ago. Now I'm here on the other side. So it's nice to be able to utilize my background. So just a little bit of background on myself. Let me go ahead and go to the next slide. What we do is just really we inspire kids. Discovery Q is a science center for education. We inspire kids, for kids to learn, have fun, and have a meaningful impact because we have interactive exhibits. And I'll talk about the exhibits that are actually at the facility after we talk about the A class of the same. Next slide. So our core initiatives at Discovery Q is really about the exhibits, making sure that they meet the state standards, teaching curriculum requirements. Just all kinds of things. Every exhibit that we have there is hands-on. There are some seasonal exhibits, but the ones that we have there for SB thirteen eighty-three and education for organics and for waste diversion are permanent exhibits. They've been there for the, the first exhibits were there since twenty-eleven. And then the last one we just secured and implemented, which is the organic one, was implemented right about a year and a half ago. So it's been amazing to have it that they're permanent exhibits. What we do do is we do measure pre and post-test information. We want to know, what do the kids know before they even come into the classroom? Or we ask the teachers, we work with the teachers, we do a pre-test and then we do a check. What did they learn from that interactive activity? Outreach programs. So outreach is we really go out there and promote the initiative that we're doing. Like we're close to Mrs. Secretary, just for people to be promoting it at the private schools and the public schools that are the be here to stay. So we do a lot of education, awareness, making sure that this pool of notes that what we're doing is available resource to that. And like I mentioned, we have state standard teaching curriculum and our onsite programs at Discovery are field trips where kids come in and they learn about the exhibits and the programs that they belong to. Teachers development. In order for kids to learn, the teachers need to be indicative. And that one of the things that we do is we educate the teachers after going into the classroom and letting the children understand what the importance of the program is. My background history is you can't really go into knock on the door and go into the pool. I mean, every school has a science-based curriculum education program. And we need those terms and that's how we're able to go into the classroom. And community engagement, which we always do, but for community events and stuff. So let's talk about what we're going to be doing. We're close to Mrs. Secretary District, the private schools and public. And we proposed to the district that we would be educating eighteen hundred students annually to educate them about how to learn more about organic recycling. We call it green or pathways. And the reason we call it green or pathways, it just sticks with the human method that green is going to be connected to what they do every day. Either when they're at school, when they're eating, where it's food reduction or food recycling, or when they're at home as well and as well as and, and you know, when they're helping the parents take their food waste. But all of our programs are going to be SB thirteen eighty-three education program. We will have key concepts. We'll help gauge their recycling habits and report back to the sanitary district. So students will walk in. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. I just want information. How to develop the community green. We're going to do useful participation, create a local type of incentive. And do activities that the kids can learn to take those habits home. Kids learn. And then we bring those habits home and educate their parents as well. As we know, here recently our type of organic recycling was implemented. So this is the perfect way to balance that trend and bring awareness to the children that live in the community. This is just a slide. It says what we're going to make, this, this FB thirteen eighty was the law. Based on the agent purpose, we're teaching from first all the way through sixth grade. So we're going to be stepping stones. First grade, what does that look like? You know, second grade. So every grade level is going to have a stepping stone. They'll understand what Senate Bill SB thirteen eighty-three is. And then how to keep sending waste, less waste to landfills. We make it fun though. We do. I know it seems like a law, but we make it fun. We want the kids to learn. And we wanted to be interesting and interactive. So we both have composting adventures that take place during the assembly. These are all in classroom assemblies. We do it individually with teachers. And so we book them way in advance. And there are up to about forty-five students, depending if there's two, two topics that they want. But depending on the classroom size, you can do up to fifty. Seventy-five percent, this is something that you see all the time, you heard in your board meetings. We are here to help with that initiative and in doing the interactive activity, recycle water, compost water, keep our air and water clean. Part of our activity is that we do the survey, the kids go through the classroom assembly. We will be giving the kids tickets to come to Discovery Q with their parents. And so we will have a coupon that's going to come back on us for the children to come with their parents and get it to scout. Children will come in for free, the parent will pay and discover. And so they'll have the opportunity to interact with the waste to recycle exhibit, which is a very interactive activity. They learn there as they're separating. Let me just go back a little bit. This race to recycle is being upgraded right now. We're going to add organics to it. When the kids are separating it, not only are they separating bottles and cans or just trash, they're also going to start separating organics. And they'll have an organic thing out there that's going to go to the conveyor belt that they need to separate. So that will be upgraded and will be completed by early November, early January. Eco Garage, kids learn about how to replace, you know, how to properly, they learn to interact with the permanent exhibit. For me, the passion resides to OC to have some space and collection centers. So I'm glad that the kids get to have fun and interact with that exhibit. Discovery Market. Discovery Market is really where kids are learning more about what best choices, reduce packaging. You know, purchasing materials that are going to be edible. At the same time, not find too much, just enough so that they don't have leftovers to have to throw away in their, in their organic field. Organic waste. This is the latest element that we just added. The kids go through an activity where they learn about environment. They have exhibit. They're standing in front of the exhibit. They're competing, they're learning. It's in English. There are some Spanish subtitles in there for kids that don't understand English. But it's an amazing activity. They learn about how to decompose, what the crucial role is with waste and the environment that's sponsored by our partner, which is OC Waste Recycling. All of these exhibits have been sponsored for upgrades by the County of Orange. So we are implementing the organics and we haven't committed, but we're adding more elements based on this report. This is just basically just the stats that we have of what we do on an annual basis. How many households come and visit us, which is twelve thousand. Guest attendance can be up to, you know, five hundred thousand. In classroom queue, education is six hundred and twenty. We're adding more students this year because the County of Orange, we partnered with them and they allowed us to pass through their contract comp for services less than what we usually offer, pass it on to all of, all of the county's partners, that carry districts and jurisdictions. So we have a really good base that's being passed through to all of our partners, working inside of the program. And then that concludes my presentation. Any questions for me?
I have a couple of quick questions. Thank you again for the presentation. You're enthusiastic about this, isn't it? You said that there are eighteen, you're going to serve eighteen hundred and fifty new or basic kids. Are, how about some basics, say, those basic kids? How do you, how do you determine that number? How did you determine that number?
By the schools and the private schools. So we can go up to higher, but we wanted to start off with the baseline. And so, and the baseline is how many students are in the district and how many we serve, which is from first grade to sixth grade.
But we, we have more, the school district has more than that.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get Marissa. So we, we have predetermined a round of thirty thousand dollars. That is the proportion of the grant that he said signed for the program. And with that, thirty thousand, eighteen hundred and fifty is a number of students.
Okay, I think you mentioned that at the city district. The other question I had was, already presentation, you mentioned the survey will go out to the kids and the parents?
It'll go to the teachers and the teachers will be responsible to respond to the survey.
So the parents aren't involved in any of that survey?
They will. They will take it home, celebrate, and then the teacher will be the one that will be connecting.
Okay. I think that's an important component because from the very beginning of all this, we talked about the key is to get the kids, you know, once you get these kids trained, I'm going to hire a couple of them to come to my house. They're taking on more than I, but I think the key is to get the kids to put the pressure on the parents, so to speak, to get this done. So I'll be curious to see what that survey from the parents says when it comes back.
Absolutely. We get a lot of different surveys. The goal is to be able to get and get feedback from the parents to faculties who are able to do that. We, we look forward to that.
Well, you mentioned surveys. We do, Scott, we do surveys, what, every five years?
Every two years you do a, can you do a wide survey?
So how, how can this information be incorporated into, or could it be potentially incorporated into our survey to see if, if, you know,
Yeah.
to backcheck the impact?
That's a possibility. We can look into that. It's a possibility, definitely.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you. My great kids are, thank you for the passion you gave out at the city meeting. But we've already got a promise to our great kids.
Yeah, we've got to come and visit. We have the member and Christmas holidays.
Oh, thank, thanks for reminding us.
You're welcome. And I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to send and then go on staff. And I'm here, and that's happening right after we have you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our requirements for thirteen or eighty-three have an educational component. So I assume this fits, it should fit into what they're asking us to do, right?
Yes, it does. And anything that we want to, we have to present to the public. They have to review them, so they have already reviewed them.
Okay. Just thought I'd say, based on what you said, we're waiting on the school districts to do what?
So I reached out and just speaking with some of the school district, they had some additional questions. They wanted to see how it would fit. Most likely is their after-school program versus their in-class program. And so I did connect them with Isabel. I haven't heard back yet to know if they want to move forward.
Okay, that's interesting. They push everything to their after-school program now.
I think their thought was kind of, as I mentioned, they have this STEM program and they thought, you know, teams dedicated to it that are, I think, going between schools and providing that STEM education. And so they want to make sure this can kind of supplement other than being away from other instructional time. I think that was kind of the idea. But so we're just waiting to kind of, to get, to move on to the damage.
We, we, when they say that it's going to be first sixth graders, the schools have any input on we're going to give it to second and third graders, or third or fourth grade? It's going to be spread across everybody, right?
Yes.
Just from experience, sixth graders are going to go, hey. First graders are going to go, when, when do we eat? You know? I, I, I would think the third and fourth grade are going to be a lot. So we're going to make the biggest impact on this.
And we'll be happy to share that report.
Thank you. I, I think that's, I think that's a important part of it. All right, anything else? Thank you both. Appreciate it. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an update on the three cart rollout program where every customer, CRM customer will be receiving a recycling card. Mike Carey and Marissa Crado will be here to assist me, but as of right now, we're pretty much at the halfway point. Delivered roughly half of the twenty-three thousand, over twenty-three thousand blue carts that will be delivered. There are, CRM delivers six hundred and fifty carts a week. We do receive complaints periodically, as you mentioned, as I mentioned in the staff report. And this is as of November fourth, so the complaint block probably went up a little bit, but as of November fourth, we had seventy-three complaints. And that's roughly less than one percent. Well, so not bad. And so the complaints that we do receive are typically CRM accidentally removed all the carts or maybe got the wrong size cart or maybe moved one too many. Whichever the complaints are, as soon as we know, we're informed, we notify CRM and they, and they resolve the problem immediately. And so Mike has been very good at reaching out to those, those customers and talking it through them. Once Mike's done talking, everyone seems to be very satisfied. So, so far, so good. I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything or Marissa can add anything. But we're, we're on track to, to deliver all the cars by mid, mid-December.
Explain to me the process again about what I want to say. So I, I want to change some of mine. In other words, I have two little organic carts. And I want to go to a middle skipper to go to a middle size. Do you want to contact Amber?
Oh, okay.
Okay. I thought that's what I had put on my little survey card, but I have to forbid that I will be one of the complainers. My needs seem to be pretty popular. There were a couple of little glitches and you guys, CRM was out there like almost the next day to get it corrected. And I, that makes a big difference. So thank you for, for doing that.
Mike, are you, are you finding the recycled cart usage, what you would expect?
We imagine we're using primarily the second week. So we'll deliver them and then pick them up the first week following. You notice that that first week, the first service day has been slow or minimal, or minimal participation. By the time they hit that second week, the majority of those neighbors have their carts in.
Are they putting the right stuff in?
They have been. We haven't noticed anything egregious coming out of, out of them yet. We have had some pushback with people not understanding that we're removing one of their mixed waste carts, even though we've found a lot of that out.
I did hear that from a few neighbors. Have you guys heard?
Yes.
You have? Nobody?
I'm on a different deal.
Because of your age or age of age.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course.
I just wanted to remind everybody that many cans need to have the lids going back down. And I noticed that in my area, a lot of the neighbors do that. And people are really upset because they're concerned over the weather and getting into the cans, curves, everything. So I just wanted to remind them.
Put them back down.
Yeah. My end there, it was a new person too on the route. And so I think they needed to be educated.
To satisfy those recycling routes, we have hired additional riders and put additional trucks out there in the surrounding areas. We also have a new ground manager that was introduced at our operations meeting that we had last year. It was very proactive and I feel that we all have them monitoring your data.
You may, you may want to start an intern program before you start.
Oh, they, you do. I watched, they have a nice driving test they have to do. We've watched them practice in the yard, picking up bins, dropping them. I would like to add, in the spirit of introducing new employees, we have a brand new sustainability specialist that will be dedicated to Coach Mason's sanitary district for Luke Gonzalez. Welcome. He's a Cal State Long Beach graduate and I'm very proud of him. I can recycle that for Mark.
You know, we, we take a deep view along the state. Most of most Cal State Fuller.
We're getting on to the bad sports.
You know, there's a rival, Biggie Fullerton.
Right, yeah. And generally, baseball, we win anyways.
He's been with us for possibly one month, now a little over a month, but he's just returned from a brief plan trip to Japan.
Well, welcome. Thank you. Anything, anything we can do to help you, talk to Mike. Just, on the back, it was exciting. And I rescued a Amazon bag yesterday. I like it and put in the blue thing. I said, no, don't do that. Remember that, that gallon that?
She called me, you know, she, she's called me twice in a while.
It says, right, I, I looked at the bag. It says right on that, thinking about the white Amazon bags. It says recite step a little. Universe.
Does it have a number?
There's no memory.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, I, I think overall, things are going very well.
Yeah, we have that, like, special factor resistance, but as Scott mentioned, it's probably one percent.
That's better than we can expect. Thank you, guys.
So Mike, you know, I'm, I'm taking the car. So, Mike, um, you know, I, I came to the car side also, is, will that happen, and I filled out my the, the survey form, or the postcard. Will that happen, uh, the week that the carts are changed in, in my route?
If you filled it out on the survey, it should happen during the exchange, during your, uh, cart delivery.
Okay, thank you.
But the other changes are gonna happen first period, January, yeah, okay. All right, thanks again, thank you, um, you just said anybody, I assumed there's some code enforcement.
I, I, I skipped over that stat, sorry, so, no, there is no, there is no code enforcement staff for today, because, uh, our code for, code enforcement officer, Dave Griffin, he is attending the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers Annual Conference in Long Beach right now. So he'll present the October and November code enforcement report in the December study session.
Yeah, like, is there was?
There's an association for.
Yeah, I think you're right, I.
Let's make our own association, right?
I didn't think we were making a call. Hi, hi, to me, Scotty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, so, uh, I'm gonna introduce, uh, Joe Jenkins from the East Environmental, as you know, uh, they are the consultant that we contracted to, to manage our fog control program. And every year, uh, Joe does the annual assessment report, or actually, and a report, uh, to the board on the activities that E E C has performed, uh, enforcing our, our parking program, so, we're on to Joe.
Good morning, morning, thank you. Get right into it. Very excited. Great, so, so I just wanted to start by just going over the different fog control program activities that E C provides for the district. And really, our, our key activity that we use is conducting what we call our risk-based F S C inspections. So it's going out, inspecting, uh, each of the food services establishments, ensuring that they're compliant with the rules and regulations of the program. But we prioritize these inspections based on F S Cs that have the highest risk to discharge excessive fog, the question system. You know, we wanna focus our inspection resources on those higher-risk areas to, to do our best to prevent farm-related cancers or overflows. We do try to get to, you know, all of that, the Cs, uh, at least once every two years, we're possible on an annual basis. When we're out doing inspections, we provide, uh, educational materials, so our education now, we find binders and posters, then make sure they're aware of the rules and regulations of the program. If needed, we're also the digital enforcement on food service establishments, so we conduct the digital follow-up inspection, then also draft and issue enforcement letters. Uh, currently, we're managing all the fog inspection data on behalf of the district, but we're working uh, with district staff to transition our database over to the city works database, that I think will be very beneficial forward. For new facilities, we support plant reviews, so ensuring that the F S Cs are installing proper research sectors, especially for new construction. And then, as we did, we can support enhancement and location characterization activities. So a little on how we manage the F S C inventory, so we have the exhaust of, of a bunch of different resources to ensure we have the most updated list of the food service establishments that are in the district service area. So periodically, we'll review the health care agency data, uh, we, we coordinate and, and contact C F S Mesa, and also some areas, first, you can work each. I mentioned the plan review previously, and then also just whenever we're out in the field doing inspections, if we notice, hey, you know, this is one we didn't host here before, we'll add it to the list. Those some stats on, on the F S Cs around the programs, we did see a slight increase in F S Cs compared to previous years, or now at approximately five hundred and eighty-seven. And so, let's go back. And so, one, one good thing to point out with this is that with the increase in, in F S Cs, we see a corresponding increase in F S Cs with gravity research centers and higher risk research centers. I mean, new facilities coming into the program are, are connected to research centers. So even though the percentage of F S Cs with the research center is staying consistent year over year, uh, you know, that's a good sign, that we're seeing growth in F S Cs, we want to see that correspondent growth, research center. Once the F S Cs are, are put in the program, uh, we then do an initial review of that, determine what their inspection frequency should be, so we have a, a couple of different, we call it risk-based elements, that we utilize, uh, to establish that frequency, so we'll get do they have higher, a higher risk cooking event, these are frills, bridle blocks, you know, anything that they would use to cook food with. Uh, their proximity to an enhanced maintenance location, whether or not they have a research center, and then do they have these special uh, kitchen best management practices required, so we can probably extra sewer line clean. So currently, uh, the five hundred and eighty-seven F S Cs, that's how it breaks down in terms of inspection frequencies for different types. With the new facilities, we did see a slight increase in quarterly and annual inspections. Any new facility that goes in a program, it initially give them an annual inspection frequency, and it's adjusted, um, after that, based off of uh, our, our inspection with that, and ongoing findings. We go out and we conduct inspections, then about a week, we've been evaluating the effectiveness of our inspections based off of the non-compliance rate. Uh, for both kitchen best management practices inspections and research sector inspections. The current goal for the district is to maintain a non-compliance rate of ten percent or less, so it will be kind of in that range. And even though we did see a slight increase in the non-compliance rate, we're still meeting that, that ten percent goal. Uh, we think the, uh, one reason for the, the increase is we did more focus on some of the shopping centers that have had an history of consistent non-compliance, so we've been there a lot working with them, and so you, you'll, we'll go there, there will be compliance, and then next time we go there, they'll be out again, and, and it's it's an ongoing battle, I, it's, that's good. But once the inspection frequency is established for a F S C, that doesn't mean that they stay with that frequency for the entire life of, of the facility. There's different factors that we'll review on a regular basis to consistently adjust, make sure we have them under the right frequency, so they're especially compliance history is a big one, if they're consistently not compliant, then we'll bump them up until you can get back in compliance. Uh, if, if there's any, uh, operating maintenance observations, or C P, C P observations of heavy fogs, that may cause an increase in inspection frequency. Uh, we review the health care agency inspection reports, and also just through our field observations, so listed activities, private sewer spills, or restricted output lines, that'll put them on our radar to increase our frequency, to make sure that they maintain consistent compliance. So a couple of examples of this are the, the two, uh, fog-related spills that the district had in the last year, caused an increase in inspection activities, so Southwest Plaza had a, uh, private, all of them, beginning public spill. Um, October second, and to C C T V inspection activities, we identified heavy fog some areas of, of the plaza, and so we have since increased inspection frequency out there a month. So every month, while I give an inspector out there going to Southwest Plaza, ensuring that they're on track and different risk they need to be doing. We're working very closely with plazas, um, uh, property management there, and their operation scheme to, to give all of them, which is easy, consistent compliance. And then Triangle Square, there's another example where they're, they're having fog discharge from them caused to standards sewer flow in October of twenty twenty-three. The property management in Triangle Square is responsible for most of the, of the research center maintenance, and they recently had turnover within their, their property management, so they weren't aware of this. So they weren't maintaining them properly, so basically, work with them, get them back on, get the consistent frequency for maintenance of their interceptors. They also have a private listing there that they should be cleaning out regularly that they weren't doing. Or, no, now Triangle Square is, is inconsistent compliance, and so we initially have them on monthly, but we still leave them back the quarterly inspection presence. The enhancement locations have, have stayed pretty consistent, back in two thousand and eleven, they're, they're nearly a hundred, but we're mostly with district staff and through, uh, aggressive rehab, new location program, we're able to get down to around eighteen, but you know, so the, these eighteen locations are, are kind of consistent, again, these are the, the shopping center areas, or areas where you have heavy concentrations of food service establishments, distributed with single points, sewer line, which is very challenging to, to, to fog out in those locations. But those, those areas are, have been our focus. Something we, we initiated this year is more aggressive residential educations for different areas, and so Iowa Street was a focus this year, where our inspectors actually went out and, and put door hangers on residents up and down. You know, Iowa Street is right there to south of the four five and Western Harbor Boulevard, so uh, we have a couple of different areas within the district that are targeted for further residential education, so to see the balance of what is provided to that. And we'll closely monitor that, and see what effect it has, which is on pre-NCs in these areas, so. It'll be more, you can see that it, uh, it makes a difference. So the, the best metric to look at in terms of determining the effectiveness of a fog program is just how many fog-related centers, sewer overflow, or sewer blockages that you're having, it's not completely, uh, attributed to fog, fog inspections, a lot of this is also practice, or maintenance, and it's been lighting. Uh, but, you know, year over year, the district has certainly had low fog-related source bill, but we did see, you know, it did, a slight uptake from the previous years to, from one last year to two this year, so, uh, a very good, um, graph, uh, in terms of, you know, the total number of spills, but what we don't wanna see is that trend to continue to increase, we wanna see that go back down again. Uh, so we'll be closely monitoring this, and not on whatever, would you have available to you so far, you know, that in this year is, it's been looking a lot better. So some recommendations that we have for the fog control programs is continue to expect F S Cs based on risk and focus, uh, F S C inspection resources on those higher-risk areas to, to discharge fog with sources, so continue to move the compliance goals and, and monitor closely the progress towards the, the ten percent or less compliance goals. Uh, continue with, you know, escalating F S C enforcement, especially on, on those F S Cs that have chronic non-compliance's and are identified as excessive fog discharge. So, um, so, you know, not just doing the, uh, follow-up inspection, inspection with them every so often, actually starting issuing them, you know, letters and, and show them that the, you know, this is serious fog compliance, which we try to do. Continue with the resident, residential education, you know, efforts in, in heavy fog areas, and so, you know, we in the past, where we had seen fog spills or fog blockages, they were mostly residential areas, so, you know, continue to identify those areas and trying to identify different actions we need to take to help mitigate fog in the, in the residential areas. And this is something new, uh, collaborating with those who stand in other agencies to investigate the use of fog using sewer line additives. So the district has in the past investigated different, like, phoning additives or other items to reduce fog. But we are seeing some that have, have been proven to be, uh, successful in some other agencies, it's been there's one that's being closely studied in the city of Huntington, city of Santa Ana, that we're, we're heavily involved in, that's shown problems. And so, if, you know, this may do that in my prospect analysis, so we'll get a prospect using visual additives in hot spot areas, we're seeing heavy fog accumulation versus ongoing sewer line clean, so it could be something worth looking further into to to help reduce fog. And then finally, fully, fully transitioning that fog database, uh, to city works. We, we do think this will be very beneficial to the district, so we'll be able to monitor in real-time the fog inspection progress and and, and the up-to-date F S C inquiry, and just be able to staff, we'll be able to, and run statistics and see how we do, also, will be also for our inspectors in the field, because they'll be able to real-time enter the data, keep the data, is not have as much time back. And, and one thing I didn't have here, though, I wanted to add, you know, after our last year's, uh, program assessment that we did, uh, we did do, uh, close-out meetings and follow-up meetings with Scott, as to make sure our recommendations are being, you know, addressed and implemented, so we are being periodically throughout here, go through our findings and, and pick them out, you know, programming improvements.
Okay, I'll read that to the question again.
I know that you have good cooperation with, um, you know, the restaurant starts up or the business, but what happens now? We get, we end up in a situation where they're, they're leaving. How fast do you get the information, or do you get the information from them?
Not very fast, so, yeah, if they're leaving, you don't get, uh, find that they're leaving, we, we identify that either through our next round, uh, you know, business license review, or that, or just review, or just being out with the deal, or it'll be scheduled for inspection, our inspector will go out there and see that it's no longer in business, a little market out at least. So, yeah, yeah, we're going to.
Thank you.
You know, that one chart that you showed, that there's a, I mean, last year, this year, a slight uptick in the, in the in, in that one area, um. Is that attributed to what? Do new employees that are double degrees? Um, just, the guy gets an inspection, and he's, so we're good now for, we can do whatever we want? What do you attribute it to?
No, I, I think those two, for those two examples, especially, they're kind of two almost separate, unique instances, you know, one, I mentioned was the, the Triangle Square, they, they had a turnover and property management, and just, new property management wasn't, uh, you know, we didn't get to them in time, that I guess that should take that long, what they need to be doing. Uh, and then the, the second one was Southwest Plaza, Southwest Plaza almost feels like, um, I wouldn't call it ticking time bomb, but you gotta stay on top of Southwest Plaza, they have a, a lot of unique infrastructure there that could.
Yeah, I was smart about Southwest, but.
Yeah, so we're, we're heavily involved now in Southwest Plaza, so a lot of it is just identifying where the highest potential is for a fog-related spill, and making sure you stay on top of those areas, so it's you know, doing that, create analysis, risk analysis of, hey, this, this could be a potential problem, we need to make sure, or stay honest with the problem before it does. So, one of the things we're really even working very closely with, with the new, um, maintenance manager, John, uh, to go get his clean cruise observations, if they're seeing heavy fog, see relationship areas, so we can make sure we're out there on top of it before it's a competition.
Well, kind of, the same kind of question, uh, is there's no way now to know, the, you know, operations people? Uh, that same, but a next corporation change. Um, I know with Southwest Plaza, the family is not nearly as involved as they used to be, um. Triangle Square is, you know, another big corporation, you know? Is there any way for you to more quickly be able to identify, you know, that, uh, there's new staff on the job? And they need to be, um, talked to.
Right, talked to, and educated. I think for those locations, just keeping them on, uh, higher inspection frequency, so that we're there um, once every three months, so that you have that turnover within that period, we'll, we'll see it in that timeframe. Um, you know, you're not there longer than the frequency it is for them to pump their research centers. I think we had backed off on Triangle Square, because we were seeing, they switched out all their research centers with the new trap silos, and they were on a good maintenance program for the lift station, it's doing very well in that area, and we so, we can just keep them on that, figure, to make sure we're clear.
Oh, why, why would they, why would they back off? Uh, there are no manager tons, and why does that back off?
It just doesn't become institutional, that, that's what you have to do to maintain, but it's not something that's on the forefront of their maintenance activities, like research centers, and you know, normally, like, a sewer location was bringing out annually, or, you know, uh, not frequently, they have to, because all of their restaurants, they're going through this lift station, so it comes in research center, so. Uh, you know, and so, they, they, they probably were under the impression that it wasn't probably well documented. You know, and so they 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 probably were under the impression that it wasn't probably well documented within their own. Docents to say, hey, we're going to call open interceptors. And then of course, they they thought that the scenes were doing it, that the scenes thought property management was doing it. And that lack of communication is is where the issues. Their whole work certainly is a one of our biggest challenges.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll I'll answer that, um when a when a corporation like Triangle Square, Joe kind of touched on. At least turnover um. A lot of times the management is switched out, and what I'm noticing both the South Coast and and Triangle Square, the management switched out. It's like the knowledge walks outdoor. So that's basically what happened at Triangle Square, fortunately our staff was leaning in, they contacted Joe, we got. On top of that, we got out of back end control. Like price uh and up to the plaza, which is very unique. South Coast Plaza has, um they they assign maybe uh. Recent interceptor. To a specific restaurant and then that restaurant takes over all said ownership or operations or maintenance, so that's specific. Recent interceptor. And so um Joe goes in or the EEC goes in and inspectors are wanting to. To work with those restaurants over the last couple of years, we had some restaurant turnover over in that area, for example, Calo, I can't remember the name of the restaurant. They took over, but they came in and we had, we were, EEC worked with South Coast Plaza to get that particular restaurant. Back working on um uh routinely and in fact. Uh EEC recommended we increase the frequency of recent pumping. Uh out of that interceptor, what I've noticed since uh August when we were working uh on this emergency. Is the grace to the temporary pump station we have out there has to decrease thanks in part to EEC and inspectors. Going out there, so we've seen a decrease over the last three or four months. Uh as a result of enhanced or increased inspection, so some of this management, some of this supervised businesses. Uh and I'll add one more point is. Uh we've been working with South uh, if you can, Co-City, Co-City Mesa. On on various aspects of permitting and we in fact they now. Put a hold on development until uh certain types of developments like ADUs, home expansions, new homes. Get super permits from us, so that's a good thing. Uh we need to work with them perhaps that when a business license. A new fit of new business license goes in, if it's associated with the restaurant, I want to try to work with the city. To advise us because if we can. Get a copy of the new business licenses, then we have a back the chance of having EEC go out and give you that in front of uh business line. Those are some things that we're still working on and and EEC and the districts are working together on making these programs happen. Or changing something in the program.
Yeah, I appreciate that, um but back to. The institutional part that you're talking about, Joe, um. These property management companies be changed. But unless it's a brand new property management company. The 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 new one coming in probably has some experience with this stuff from wherever that they came from. Yeah, same with the with the operator of the restaurant, I mean. Unless it's a brand new. Operation, that guy came from somewhere else and so. There's some blame on him too, but not just.
Yeah, a lot of depends what we see is they'll come in and they'll follow like industry standard for maintenance, so industry standard for most research services. So once every three months, but yeah, we've had like especially in South Coast Plaza, most of those interceptors are two months or monthly. So we'll initially put them on that three month, which isn't enough, they'll get to pull the past fog system and you know, working to get back to where they were.
Okay, anything else, Joe?
Thanks, you always make a deep to understand, great, we appreciate that.
Okay, uh we're going to go to item nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, turn this over to Mark Huster.
Yeah, um thank you, Honorable Board, as you um may have noticed or may have heard. Last week, we grilled three new water in Northover South Coast Plaza, they're pretty big um. Wells, the hole is about three foot diameter, the wells are two foot diameter with a twelve inch casing. Uh we started well testing this morning, I was out there before six AM. Uh to make sure that things were going well with our pump station because we're currently discharging the the testing water tube. Uh and what we're going to measure is how much water can one well pump? And what is the water level associated with that particular pumping rate? So there's two or three things going on there, how much water can we pump? And then based at different pumping rates, what does the water level look like? Right now, when there's no pumping, we find the water level is about six feet. Uh today I'm asking the board, however, to ratify the agreement with T P Roberts to perform uh emergency sewer replacement. T P Roberts comes to us highly recommended from city to municipal community particularly. Uh Multnico Water District uh has also recommended them, in fact, um T P Roberts is finishing up a couple of. Emergencies and there's been a little bit of a vote about one of their emergencies in our emergency. City Santa Ana highly recommends T P Roberts and Fashion Island. Uh and among other, uh I would say organizations have highly recommended T P Roberts, um as you know, Fashion Island is a pretty prestigious. Uh sh- uh shopping or uh center similar to South Coast Plaza. Uh and and they have similar types of operations where all the work is usually done in the evening or nighttime. And then and during the day, it's like this, and all the customers are out doing their their thing and then all the meetings come out after the mall closes at night. We are um very good, T P Roberts is very considerate of South Coast Plaza operations and they have. Experience with these types of operations, they're currently helping accordingly trash pickup. Dock operations, K R packing their dock loading dock, I think it's speed is important. Uh and then I would say the T P Roberts, safe user number one consideration, in fact, I struggle sometimes even get them to do work tonight because. Uh as you were aware, nighttime work is probably twice as dangerous as daytime work, just because you can't see things. Um uh when something does happen, you don't have access to parts houses. Uh many other things that come up, so that that anything that happens in the middle of the night is much more exaggerated than if uh an incident occurs during the daytime. So I would say they're one of the most safest contractors I've worked with in a long, long time. Um that means that staff negotiated a time and materials agreement and we're bringing. Uh this agreement to you for ratification, the agreement is based on our typical markups and overhead values, if you've. Uh as you recall, uh if you already read their agreement, because it's attached to this report, the agreement is is based on our typical overhead values. The, as you also recall, the district pipeline failed in August of twenty four. Uh and South Coast Plaza, I'm going to say about sixty percent of the pipeline could not be serviced. And so we declared an emergency uh late August. Uh so that we could install temporary pumps to do what we needed to do to recover. Uh sewer service to South Coast Plaza, uh I hate to finish off, one, I don't want to have a SSO and two. Uh at the amount of sales that goes through the South Coast Plaza every day, I hate to have that shit down for you one day, it's a lot of money. So that being said, uh last week we did grill some wells, T P Roberts grilled three test wells for us. Of waters currently is six feet below ground level and our goal. Will be eventually to design a well system in Conferdam so that we can uh. Excavate down about twenty five feet, so that's a long ways to go when they're when it's all completely underwater. Some things I'm asking for you under this item is one, adopt. Uh project three five five, South Coast Plaza urgent capital repair as examined under CCL. Public Resources Code twenty one thousand um um. Under section fifteen two sixty nine B, your emergency repairs. And two, the second thing I'm asking for, and I believe they have to be separate um items, so you've got to take item number one first. Second item will be ratified, staff negotiated and approved time and materials awareness with T P Roberts. To provide the emergency uh compression services required to install uh wells. Induct the excavation and replace our pipeline and all those services related to that. Um with that, I I do have another report afterwards that I'll go into some additional detail of what we've completed so far today. But with that, can I ask any questions? Uh and or discuss things further uh so that I can get your. Uh ratification on the uh negotiated time and materials agreement.
What did you want for the question?
I think, Mr. President, uh Mark, a couple of questions, uh first, in this agreement, uh it's a T N M basis. Yes. But then why is there a change order uh breakout? Because if it's T N M, it's T N M.
We have a change order document.
Well, uh well, for a couple of reasons, as you're, you are correct, as I correct, um emergency operations and construction activities. I'm correct, you know, so there's not really a change order and those activities will be based on time and materials, there's two reasons why those. That T N M is in there, one, it talks about the. The markups, the overheads, uh what they can charge, number one, and two, it is our standard language and so I left it in there. Uh but because it does have some relevance to what they can charge us, uh that's the biggest thing and why do we we keep that in there?
Okay, and then uh. At this, say, I mean, you mentioned night work and all of that, you're talking about, you know. Time out, double time out, how much of that do you foresee, I mean, or have you been?
Well, uh we're currently. Because we're coming up to the holiday season in South Coast Plaza, we're trying to be very respectful of their operations. And and they're they're. Pretty adamant about us working at night, so many of the activities, like for example, last week. Literally, the entire well drilling operations was done at night, we started. At about nine, at nine when the mall closes and we went till seven AM and then we would pull off side, open up the road, which is the the all of. The restocking of of the uh businesses and that can occur by nine AM when the mall opens, or ten AM when the mall opens, depending on the date.
Are if if they are, are they going uh work six, pay eight, or is it eight and eight?
I I don't really answer that question. What do you mean by that, yes?
Well, meaning, you know, o- oftentimes out there, if you're working overnight shifts, you're only actually working six hour shifts but getting paid for eight.
We're actually working eight or nine hour shifts depending on the daytime.
That's, alright.
So so they're, we're not, um uh they are a prevailing wage organization. However, they're not union and but they do, in order to do, as you're aware, to be non-union, they do pay prevailing wages, they recognize all the union holidays. But they give some extra benefits, uh like health insurance and some other things. Uh that's why sometimes you look at their their rate, it's attached to the brand, it's likely higher than maybe another contractor that is. Unionized.
Right, okay, and then which then leads me to my next question, I just want to be clear. The rates that are in the scheduled hourly, um those are already marked up twenty or twenty would be on top of these rates?
No, those have been marked up, can you, uh let me, let me look at what um. Thought there was a note, oh yeah, if you look at the first page of the labor rates. Uh you'll see it said labor is marked up to hundred percent, so that includes that twenty percent markup already.
Yeah, and that's what confused me, if it's down below and it says, then it breaks out your markup, so I just want to be clear.
Yeah, and now the equipment rate, and I believe that uh the equipment rates. And and other markers are not included, but the labor rates are included twenty, but including twenty percent. Well, then the reason they do that, we do that and they do that and we negotiated that is because. Depending on if it's a material, subcontractor, um. They have limitation based on what's in section four change orders, so we, for example, hold them to five percent. Uh markup on subcontractor work. Okay, and then uh I'm almost done, uh on the.
What about, are they allowed to charge for delivery charges?
Uh it de- I'm going to say it depends on many things. So, for example, the well work that we did last week. Um delivery and and handling, materials handling and all that was included in our in prices. But there probably, like if we bring in. Uh hoses from uh one of the parts houses locally, there'll be, that those parts houses charge a delivery rate, so they will have the delivery rate embedded in that price. Where it's insured on the on the invoice as a delivery rate.
And that will get marked up as to what percent?
Uh as well, it's it's materials, it's fifteen percent.
Part of fifteen percent, huh, alright, and then last question, uh on the equipment, hourly. I mean, most of it I get, uh it, but a lot of that is that owned leased or rent, you know, or is or do they own most of those items or are they rented?
Um I'm going to say in both, for example, right now, uh. What we're refining, let me back up and say what we're refining is because we're right next to the south parking structure, we're flying. People would park instead of using crosswalks and everything, they would tend to walk for our 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 site. So we put a complete fence around, a chain link fence around it. And that fence is currently leased, so it's not leased, but. Uh they have their own cones, they have their own um uh water truck, welding truck, I mean, it depends on what's what the activity is and what 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 it is.
So then I guess the the one thing that sticks out to me is the pickup truck.
Yeah.
Are we paying them to come to work every day? Their hourly plus the rental of their pickup truck?
Uh we haven't had a chart, uh I've I've seen a couple of invoices so far from them, one for August and one for September. Uh I again think I've yet to get the the October invoice, but we have not been charged for a pickup chart, but that's an interesting question I'll ask and what. When do they charge this one, they don't, do they not charge this for for a pickup chart? Um I do notice that when they come in. Normally all of their employees will come in various vehicles, so I'm assuming those are not extra charges.
Yeah, I would definitely pinpoint that. Specifically because it's it's a double, it's a double charge, you're gonna, and then though, I'm not saying them, but. Others in the industry will go, delivery, the hourly rate and this pickup truck? It's like a triple, so just keep an eye on that.
I understand that, we have to do the same thing with GSI, uh GCI when we did the emergency on Paul Rainham. Um that's, you're gonna see uh. RBH and associates, we have, we have a contracted inspector. And so I have that inspector out there and that's one of the things that we're working with the, I'll call it project superintendent on, is whether we're going to charge, when are we charged? And whether we not have to be charged for on a daily basis, and that's why I have, I'm out there, he's out there, um you know, I've got. Um other district staff that go out and assist with some of this because it, you know, like last week we were working all night long. But we do, we're on top of all that, keeping track of what equipment people are on site and we're working with reviewing the the invoice. But we'll do the, we did the same thing with GSI, same contract. Um same. Uh well, I I don't say the hourly rate was exactly the same, but they they have a a menu that that they charge for the same thing. It's something that we have actively managed and just making a lot of my time um. To get it through this project.
Okay, yeah, just keep an eye on that, yeah, and all the equipment for that matter, because. Yeah, industry thing that can get a little bit out of hand.
Yeah, I will, I will uh also mention that. Where I can get prices ahead of time, like, um what we did is, uh we worked with Brifin and we actually had to give us a price for drilling three wells. And so um. Uh you know, discuss this in the next item, but we had some issues in the drilling one an extra day. Um because they gave us a price, I'm not going, well, at least I don't think we're going to be charged for the extra day. I don't know what kind of change order will, you know, we have, we saw that that would be negotiated, but some of that is is. Uh you know, being done as well, if we pre-negotiate some things, if we know what we are, we know a specific scope of work. Perfect, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Um I I've waited on that for a while. Um. Mark, we ran into the same high water problem when when we were doing, I would. Sewer work at IP, and I think we're building a new sewer, so there may be some historical. Uh information that might be helpful. To see how much de-watering they had to do and how they were successful at getting that ground water down. RBH may have that information.
Um ab- absolutely, in fact, that's my thing about having RBH in contract because they did pull some of that information out for us, the other thing that they did. Is um they're. The other thing that they did is um they uh they reached out on our behalf to Orange County Water District. They have, because for the Talbert Aquifer starts to come up there and it's within sixty-five feet of the surface. They had several maps indicating ground bars in that particular area, but we were able to share that with the contractors, obviously, but only because Griffin is a sub to T E Roberts right now. And and that was very helpful, so it was good having a consultant on board that has some good experience, that was uh uh records in their in their files.
Okay, do you have other questions relating or? The movement on the recommendation? I will uh make a motion to uh adopt project uh three five five and um. Being that classified as exempt under C four. Can we do these all together or are they separate?
We should separate.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion in the second for the discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
I think it's.
That motion carries four to zero with one absence. Uh item two.
So move item two to ratify the staff negotiated time and material basis agreement with T E Roberts.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, discussion, all those in favor?
I.
I oppose.
Uh item two of the recommendation carries four to zero with one absence. And finally, item three.
I would so move item three, uh directing staff to provide a final project update and review of all expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in second discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That motion also carries four to zero with one absence. Alright, thank you, Mark. Go ahead, item ten.
Okay, and Scott, did you want to start us out or move? Okay, um.
You love to make it fast.
Um and as you uh are very well aware, um the sewer pipe failed in uh August, and it was a quiet. Uh and then we knew it was old, we knew it needed some work, and so we hired a contractor to install a special liner. Uh and so during that line process and preparation to install the liner. Uh the pipeline burst open, groundwater inundated the pump station, so I uploaded our pumps. And at that point, we had to declare an emergency because not only did the pipeline literally fail, but our pump station was inundated with um. Uh dirt and rocks and debris, so we had to get that all cleaned out too. Um so as part of that emergency, we installed some temporary bypass pumping, uh and and at least we reestablished service. And then we went in, once we reestablished service for South Coast Plaza, we went in to try to still do a non-dig. Of that of that pipeline, and so we went in and 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 uh we were having trouble getting our pipeline in. And in fact, uh the contractor was ready to walk away from the job site, but I I asked them to. Try installing that that temporary pipeline, which finally was successful in getting in there. But um I probably should have let him walk away because that attempt failed, but if I had been successful, we would have walked away with a. I'll say sixty thousand dollar repair instead of a, you know, where we're heading to these days. So my hail mary pass failed, um and and so since that time, we conducted soils work. Uh geotechnical work to figure out what kind of and whether we have to do the design, the coffer dam. We completed the survey work so we can start laying out um uh the the pumps. The wells, the coffer dam, we have utilities we have to relocate. In order to do that, we did a utility search so far, we then we've used ground penetrating radar and. With Dig Alert, we have both a private contractor, Mark utilities, and a utility company, Mark utilities. And we're gathering all that data and putting that in to figure out what utilities need to be, um I'll say temporarily relocated. Unfortunately, there's some, a couple of big S conduct banks to go through there, so we're gonna. It just won't be practical to relocate those, so we're gonna have to somehow work around those big duck banks. Um we've dr- we've we've drilled three test wells last week and we started the pumping test this morning. Um and we have a base map, in addition, we started having design meetings a couple of weeks ago. Tomorrow is our second design meeting, we include South Coast Plaza in those meetings, we include our contractor. We have our um R V H, our consulting engineer at those meetings. South Coast Plaza tends to bring their contractors as well, they're pivoting on our designs, which I appreciate because they've been the ones that. Dug up that in the past, uh they also are the ones that are causing me some heartburn, for example, they. Lost a banho box when they were doing a a replacement of their sewers. And when they lost the box and then started to have ground cave in. They they left the box in and cut a hole in it, put the sewer through, so now I have to go in and cut it, cut it that out. So that's something that we learned a lot over the last half and a half. Um we're, uh over the next six weeks, we have to design the coffer dam, design the well. And come up with, and this is probably one of the more difficult challenges, how are we gonna bypass sewage at the South Coast Plaza? Because right now, we're using the wet well, the banho as a wet well. And because we're gonna have to dig all the way around that to remove the box and install our new sewer. I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna provide sewer service for South Coast Plaza. Um uh in this, in the report as you as you read, we probably have about, so we moved up to about a one point six million. Dollar estimate, um we are talking to South Coast Plaza. However, since drilling the wells, since doing many of these other things, I'm finding that. Our the the estimate seems to be rising every time we learn more information, the good news is. As we find things out, the risk is dropping, and so the number is getting firmer all the time, but I think we're gonna hit somewhere around two million dollar price tag for this. For this operations, um uh I think that's about all I have to bring up today. What I would like to do is either at the at the uh November board meeting or perhaps the December study session, I wanna preview. Photographs from the well drilling we did that last week, because that'll show it, and it's there photographs that I also wanna show South Coast Plaza. They're experiencing that we do work at night, I and the contractor are pushing back and telling them, no, we have to work during the day. Because even if you work in back, we're gonna have that area completely inundated with excavation wells, have the equipment and. When I show you the pictures, you will appreciate that even, we can't just remove all that stuff during the day or open up their 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 jackery. So we are negotiating things like one, allowing access to the loading dock. And then we're gonna provide another access for the trash service, and our contractor will have to remove that trash, slide it over. Allow the trash truck to come and remove it, and then we will slide it back in place, so we're kind of negotiating some of that. Uh with South Coast Plaza at the moment, so that's just uh one of the key sticking points we have to work on is 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 how much of the area that we have to close. I will tell you that if we try to do what they want us to do, probably raise the cap, the co- uh the price at about half a million dollars, so I'm pushing back right now. And telling them, no, we're not gonna be able to do that, we accommodated them on this because it was a week's worth of work. But the next phase, starting in January, would be four to six weeks, so there's no way. I'm gonna be able to to open that area up every single day, it just isn't gonna work. Um so that concludes my report, uh are there any questions or would you like any other information that I can bring another time?
You have put down for January that all this would be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you do you think it's a fair estimate?
Um I believe that uh because of the quality of the contractor, because we're T N M. And because um we're gonna have uh our consultants, engineers, and I will be out there literally literally every day. Uh throughout the day, we have inspections out there, I believe we can get this done, we can afford this. So we start the first, uh and then some of this, uh let me back up and say. I will have a better, in about two weeks, three weeks from now, I will have a better uh estimate or schedule and a better cost estimate. That's why I'm thinking we'll probably bring you a detailed estimate at the at the uh December study session, because I will definitely have. Much, much better information, we have, we will, yeah, I guess. Have determined what, when at work hours or working at night or not, um right now, I'm gonna say no. Uh but we will have more of that worked out in the next couple of weeks, because we have a couple more meetings with South Coast Plaza.
So could you also include weather permitting?
Well, that's true, um not not good, I've heard that we're having an union this year, which means, which could mean. Less than normal rainfall or snowfall uh in our area. But you are correct, if if for some reason we have a week-long um uh. Atmospheric river, that's gonna cause delays, more than a week, let's put it that way, because we're gonna have to probably do. Just maintain the site during an atmospheric river, that would cause delays, and we probably have to stop all work together while we just. Keep bailing things out, I mean, as it is, we're gonna be working on one.
I just want this protected.
Protect what?
I just want this protected, you know, in words to the right end, something about another pandemic.
Well, that's an interesting, that's an interesting thought and a and a suggestion, I've been thinking that myself, particularly after last week. Um and it's something that I want to talk to our general manager about is potentially entering into an agreement or at least something that describes. What they expect and what we expect uh for this this particular activity, because I think it would be good to put all this stuff down in writing.
Let's just hope for a good Christmas, so that everybody will have plenty of money to pay for the sink.
Well, if if we have that good of a Christmas, and people are getting that, that might create a mother issue, but uh yes, I would agree with you. Through Christmas, we we plan no activities between now and January fourth except. Uh we will have a person sitting doing our pumping test for the next three days. Uh district staff need going in twice a week, we usually do it before seven A M to refuel the uh emergency bypass pumps. And then we have to respond to alarms, which we can walk into in most cases. There is a small leak uh in the air relief valve, um it's it's not a spill because. Um it it discharged us to a location and raised back to the well well, but Wednesday, we're gonna change that out, and that's. Being done concurrently with a change out of all our other airbags, which is a different issue, but we've gotta do some work in there as well. Sometimes we have to do regular maintenance for the maintain our existing pump station.
Hey, everyone invest in Bitcoin, they'll be okay. Absolutely. Now? Okay, alright, thank you, Mark, thanks for your opinion, uh by by the way, would you? Once you get this testing done that you're doing right now, you have a date on when you're gonna stop everything?
Well, when you mean stop everything, the.
It's great for Christmas.
Yeah, we've already, I'll say, the construction activities, we've already stopped.
Okay.
There are other trucks and trains and tractors and people trucks in the cap for the um well testing work being done. The uh Griffin de-watering, uh Griffin contractors, they park their vehicles south of the south parking structure, and they walk in, because all they have to do is. Um I'll say drop a a little, uh like a little fishing line, but it's got a light on the end, and what they do is they measure the water level in. Four different locations, and then they increase the well speed, they decrease the well speed, or what we're trying to do is figure out. Uh what the water level is at different pumping rigs, so that's one of the things we're trying to understand.
That's the thing.
But but that's, yeah, that's, that's, well, that, this vehicle truck is included in the price.
Oh, no, no, someone just.
So, but but you you, you guys made a very good point, and we'll keep, we'll keep track of all that stuff for you. But that being said, they do walk in, they're there, um they're behind the the box thing on Callit, and but there's no real construction activities. Uh come Friday morning, we will shut off the well, they will, they will have to remove their, they have a generator back there, it's not running well. And they will remove that, and then and then after that, activity is just our staff basically going in and out and 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 um. Doing, I'll say, a couple times a week, maintenance and observations to check things out, of course, um. And speaking of staff, uh this is a tenuous situation, I will continue to recommend to the general manager and to our board that we maintain the emergency status. As an example, we were out this morning, and I I noticed that suction hose needs to be replaced on the pumps. Good thing we were out there, in fact, it was T E Roberts who pointed it out to me, and so we're gonna first screen and suction hoses and install them. Uh well, we installed one that needs to be replaced, and we're gonna have a couple of spares to get us by the next six weeks, but it's stuff like that. The reason why we're continuing to move, but the reason I can't just start digging today is I need to figure out. How we're gonna dig, and that's some of the stuff that we're trying to do right now.
Good, good job there.
And as an aside, do you know what um the D E S level is of is of the water that they're pumping out?
It's really well, when you, when we initially started pumping, we put it through a clarifier, but we've not officially tested it, but I'll tell you what, it looks like spark was spotted out there.
Well, I don't mean it's plainly.
You're talking about T E S, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as, I I don't, I I don't know the answer to that question.
It's all solid, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, because it's all solids, I don't know what that is, if you'd like to test it again, I don't know the sort of where testing.
Well, I may so would be.
We're spending a lot of money on the pickup.
Yeah, exactly. T and L and M.
I would see it in the idea, yeah.
Uh I have a secret hunch, um my understanding is there might be an irrigation well that South Coast Plaza uses. And I think that they use some of this for that, um and then and my understanding is the secret store family has a well on their side too that they use. And I'm guessing they're using this water as well.
I get that, yeah, same 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 down in the water, yeah.
Now, there is the Talbert Aquifer, which is sixty-five feet down, where as I mentioned, is is uh professor, you know, for your understands, whatever that means and. And 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 what we also need to be careful, we don't hope to alter the aqua, the play layer between the perched water and that uh the aquifer.
And what are the strip? Okay, anything else? Alright, let's move to closing items, uh oral communications director comments. Um I do have a comment for Scott and Alani, I didn't need to overreact on that matter last week, oh.
That was a, I guess, a receiving file, um legal counsel reminding me, anything, do you have to do an action on that?
No, it's, it's.
I have some boards that, receiving file, they have to take a motion, I think they said it's a receiving file, why are we doing that? Anyway, back to my comment, apologize for overreacting on that, I was listening to an attorney, that's why I get so excited. But uh just for all of, for all of us that in Alani knows, um we do a lot of Facebook. Stuff, and I know some of us share that Facebook, which is, but I was at a. Special District's Leadership Foundation meeting last week, and we had an attorney giving us an update on Brown Act. And social media came up, obviously, to this, he said that if you. If if the district puts out a a Facebook posting and we hit like, that's a Brown Act violation. If it, it lets everybody know how we feel about.
Yeah.
So it's okay to share it, you just can't like it before you share it, that's what I found out. So I I think I get like, I think I've done it a number of times, just because I like what you're doing, but um. Director Perry is probably bigger added than I am, so I'll talk to him, I have the mentor of mine. Uh that that's, that's always, there was some interesting stuff that this this attorney brought up. In fact, his report was so good, he couldn't finish it, but he talked a little bit about A I and some of the things that are coming down. I think there's gonna be some real big challenges to the Brown Act over a lot of this stuff, so we'll see, we'll see. Anyway, apologies to you for.
Thank you.
Okay, any else? Nope. Alright, thank you all, good meeting, appreciated, and uh. Thank you all.